All right, I call this special meeting of EPSB to order. I'll begin by reading the mission statements. The Education Professional Standards Board in full collaboration and cooperation with its education partners promotes high levels of student achievement by establishing and enforcing rigorous professional standards for preparation, certification, and responsible and ethical behavior of all professional educators in Kentucky. Sharon Chesser joins us today as the Board Secretary. Ms. Chesser, thank you for joining us. Please call the roll.
Good morning, thank you. Amanda Ellis.
Amanda Ellis, present.
Susan Reber. Diane Berry.
Diane Berry, present.
Elijah Edwards. Kathy Gunn.
Kathy Gunn, present.
Tracy Hunt. Jacqueline Mayfield.
Jacqueline Mayfield, present.
Meredith Pittman. Amber Snell. Carmen Souter.
Carmen Souter, present.
Wade Stanfield.
Wade Stanfield, present.
Julian Bosques-Hallig. Timothy Wooster.
Timothy Wooster, present.
Vice Chair Weedman.
Sarah Weedman, present.
Chair Mitchell.
Justin Mitchell, present.
We have Coram.
Thank you, Ms. Chesser. This morning, we are going to begin with the reports of the Commissioner. Commissioner of Education and Chief Learner Jason Glass joins us as Executive Secretary to the EPSB. I will now recognize Commissioner Glass to provide his reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'm glad everybody is able to get together this morning. I'll be very brief. I know that you've got a really full agenda and a tight timeline, so I'll jump right in. We continue to move forward with the States United We Learn effort. Some tangible examples of that include the launching of the co-op work around deeper learning around the state. There are numerous meetings that are starting to take place this week and next week to get that moving. The purpose of that really is to create an infrastructure of support around deeper learning across the whole state. So I'm excited to see that take root even starting today. Another tangible example is the PBL Works trainings that have happened over the course of the summer and continue to take place. Encourage you to take advantage of those opportunities if you haven't had a chance to. It's a wonderful resource around bringing problem and project-based learning and shifting student tasks in the work that we're doing with kids in Kentucky. And it's probably one of the highest leverage points we have in changing learning experiences for students is if we can get these problem-project-based approaches to take root. Another major effort that was launched this summer is the State's Equity Playbook Effort. We now have 80 districts that have signed on in support of that. So they'll be using the strategies that are in the Equity Playbook to identify some research-based strategies to move the needle on equity when it comes to staffing or resource allocation, other supports for kids from historically underserved backgrounds in their schools. So we're excited about that. And just before the holiday break, the Independence Day break, we released the LGBTQIA+ Support Resource Page. And so there are a number of optional resources and supports available to school districts if you want to dive into those and find some embedded resources that we think are of high quality. Finally, I'll just close up by saying that we have before us really the first opportunity for an undisrupted year of learning since 2019. So think about that. Since 2019, the opportunity for the first year of undisrupted learning. So that's a big shift, and we have a real opportunity here if we can recommit. We know that we've got lots of work to do, lots of catching up to do, and lots of student experiences to create. But that's my call to all of you and to all educators in the state really is remember the reasons that we got into education and recommit to that right now because it's going to be so important just in the days ahead. I'll turn things over to Amanda Ellis with the Council on Post-Secondary Education to share her update, and then I'm going to drop off, Mr. Chair, and I think Byron's on after that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I will be brief as well, knowing that we are tight on timeline. Just want to bring your attention to a couple of things. The CPE has launched a couple of podcasts. So if you're podcasting and you want to hear some things, we have a podcast called Higher Education Matters that features a wide range of topics, both in higher education and the intersection with workforce development. And so we have featured different folks and encourage you to listen to that. We also have one that is specific for high school counselors, middle school counselors, or anyone who advises students. It's called Well Advised. This is our effort around the Kentucky advising academy to kind of relaunch college and career advising and really helping students to start thinking about their post-secondary plans, whatever they may be, to help achieve their career goals and even seek out what those may be. There are lots of opportunities coming up, and they do have ELID credit assigned to them. It starts with a podcast single topic, then we have a webcast, knowing that a lot of folks can't always travel to get where they need to be to learn, and so we want to meet you where you are. And then we do have two face-to-face meetings, one in the fall and one in the spring coming up. So encourage you to find that on Twitter and Instagram. It's very easy to follow. And Destiny O'Rourke, if you have not met her, she is highly contagious with her passion for this work and her excitement for what's to come. We do have six new field staff that will be serving in the different regions in the state to help support this work. And so I'm anxious for you to learn more about it. And then other thing I want to bring to your attention, I think, is a great opportunity. And as Commissioner Glass said, there's a lot of things we haven't been able to do since 2019, and one of those things is expose students, especially first-generation, possible college-goers, to campuses and learning and opportunities. And our Gear Up Kentucky was able to offer that to incoming sophomores in high school at EKU for three weeks. We had about 20 students from our Gear Up regions who would be first-generation college-goers, live on campus for three weeks, complete a three-credit-hour course, eat on campus, learn about the resources, and every single one of them stayed all three weeks. All of them successfully completed their three-credit-hour course, and it was highly successful. We are so grateful for the families and the students who took the chance. This week, actually yesterday, we had our second group of students, 25 students, moved to Morehead State University. For the next three weeks, they will have the same opportunity. So this could really be life-changing for students. I would encourage you to follow them also on Twitter to see what the kids get to do. At EKU, they got to participate in the flight simulator, they got to do art, they got to be a part of the campus, go on cultural field trips, and do all kinds of really incredible things. The parents were included as well, the beginning and the end, and we're hoping for the same great outcomes for the students at Morehead for the next three weeks. And then to round out, the continuum is moving and acting. Our work groups just completed over 130 individual interviews or focus groups for stakeholders in Kentucky to give feedback specifically on ninth grade on track, the importance of advising and really supporting students as soon as they enter, and really before they enter high school, and why that matters for their post-secondary decisions and opportunities. We also had a work group continuing to work on early post-secondary opportunities with a heavy emphasis on the dual-credit policy and professional learning opportunities and first-year post-secondary success. And so we are anxious to dig into that stakeholder feedback. It drives our work. So stay tuned. We'll be tweeting out about that as well as those groups meet next week and the following. So lots of great work going on, lots of opportunities to engage in this work to strengthen our pipeline. So Chair Mitchell, I will stop there and turn it over to Byron.
Hey, good morning, everyone. Thanks so much for allowing this to happen and giving you time. Most importantly, thank you for your service and just the commitment to support our educator workforce. Just a few things to note. I want to recognize just two individuals that are entering retirement from OELE. Dr. Eve Profit and Jenny Ray are officially in retirement. And although I'm not sure, because every retiree I meet already has another job or they've been pulled back in, but technically, they are concluding their service with the department. And two individuals that have really made an outstanding impact just on the work at large. So I want to make note of their service, and there'll be big shoes to fill from all that they've accomplished. Just thought I would take a brief moment just to update you on the new Kentucky educator credentialing system. So back, the launch date was May 2nd, so it shouldn't be that long ago, but now we're well past that date. And in spite of kind of just the regular bumps of transitioning from one big system that has been in place for decades into a brand-new platform, obviously, there will be some bumps in the road, and there have been, but thankfully, just educators at large have been very patient. The staff has been outstanding in just trying to problem-solve, create resources, and be available to assist. But it's getting momentum, and I think the larger picture as we get more efficient at it really has a lot of promise. So essentially, just to give you an idea of all that goes into the parts of getting credentials out to our educators. So as of the 17th of June, the total applications reviewed were 2,175. And so these were mainly KEC-submitted applications and some resubmitted in the legacy or the prior applications that had deficiencies. The total applications that have been approved as of June, 1,851, and these include emergency substitute applications as well as auto renewals. So this really outpaces the processing and approval of applications compared to the entire month of May. And this is due to many reasons, but certainly enhanced improvements, updates, and the resources that the Certification Department is providing. And then also, the KEC system, as we would anticipate, just has a greater deal of functionality than the old system did. So they are able to auto-issue emergency substitute applications and also sort of auto-issue license renewals that are just sort of abiding by what's necessary. So this feature has resulted in 1,257 auto-issued renewal certs for our teachers, and then 593 auto-issued emergency sub-certificates since May 2nd. So essentially, what this does is it allows staff to focus on more detailed issues and needs while the system itself can sort of run the boilerplate, if you will, applications through. So as we get moving and continue to refine it, and people get just more familiar with seeing a different system, really anticipate that this is going to be a substantial shift just in productivity and level of efficiency. So still things to work out, but the platform so far is beginning to deliver as they have promised, and we'll continue to work with our partners at Randa in order to continue to improve this. So it's great to be here with you all, and I just appreciate you all so very much.
Thank you both, and thank you for the work that's happening at CPE and as well as the Office or the OELE and everybody in the staff that's just making that a smooth process for educators throughout the year. So I thank you for that. We'll now move to the consent items. The following items are listed on the agenda as consent items. A, approval of April 11th, 2022 EPSB meeting minutes. B, Georgetown College Program Approval School Principal Certification. And C, Western Kentucky University Approval of Proficiency. Does anyone wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for further discussion? Having received no requests to remove from the consent agenda, can I have a motion to approve consent items A through C?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Wooster. Do I have a second?
Jacqueline Mayfield, I approve.
All right, a second, Ms. Mayfield, and a lot of others. Thank you for that. The motion before the board is to approve consent items A through C. As this meeting is being conducted via video teleconference, we will have a roll call vote for each vote. Ms. Chesser will call the roll. I would like to remind each board member to please state their name, pause for a moment, and then state their votes. Ms. Chesser, please call the roll.
Diane Berry.
Diane Berry, approve.
Amanda Ellis.
Amanda Ellis, approve.
Kathy Gunn.
Kathy Gunn, approve.
Jacqueline Mayfield.
Jacqueline Mayfield, approve.
Carmen Souter.
Carmen Souter, approve.
Wade Stanfield.
Wade Stanfield, approve.
Timothy Wooster.
Timothy Wooster, approve.
Vice Chair Weedman.
Sarah Weedman, approve.
Chair Mitchell.
Justin Mitchell, approve.
Voting is complete.
Thank you, and the motion passes. Today, I would like to recognize Sherri Powers and Carmen Souter for their service to EPSB. Dr. Sherri Powers was appointed to the Board in 2016 as a representative for public colleges and universities. Dr. Powers has been with the Board through multiple reorganizations and has also served as the waiver committee chair. Dr. Powers retired as Dean of the College of Education at Eastern Kentucky University on June 30th. Carmen Souter was appointed to EPSB in 2020 to represent elementary school teachers. On July 31st, she will be retiring from her teaching position with the Laurel County Schools. We just want to thank both of you all so much for your dedication to this Board and to the teaching profession and just EPSB as a whole. So you all will be missed, and we wish you both the best in retirement. So thank you all very much. The Board's procedures establish a waiver committee that meets prior to the Board meetings to review waiver requests and make recommendations to the full Board. The waiver committee consists of one teacher, one administrator, and one higher education representative. At this time, I appoint Dr. Timothy Wooster to serve as the Higher Education Representative on the committee. I also appoint current waiver committee member Kathy Gunn to serve as the waiver committee chair. Thank you both for your willingness to serve on this committee. All right, and I don't have any further updates at this time, and so I'm going to move along to information item. Today, we have one information item. This item is presented to the Board for review and discussion only, and is presented by Cassie Trueblood.
Good morning. Thank you all so much. Information item A relates to a new alternative route to certification option. During this last legislative session, the General Assembly passed House Bill 277, which amends KRS 161048, which is the statute that contains the alternative routes to certification. Specifically, this bill created the Option 9 alternative route, which provides for an expedited certification for an individual to teach at any grade level through a cooperative program between a college or university and a school district. This expedited route will result in a bachelor's degree and initial certification within three school years. What's important to note here is this does differ from the other alternative routes in that the individual is not certified while they are completing the route. The candidate will be eligible for a residency or paraprofessional component, which will involve classified employment with the participating school district. The district must also use experienced teachers to provide mentoring and coaching throughout the program. The full statutory language for this route is included in your agenda book on page 74 in the staff note. And this alternative route will go into effect this Thursday with the legislation. So the EPSB will need to promulgate an administrative regulation to set the standards and procedures for the route, and we'll review that shortly in the action items. But to help set the stage for that discussion, we have some guests with us today who are going to join us to discuss and present their vision for this route. So if they are able to join us, we have Beverly Fort and some other staff members from the Christian County Schools. There they are. So I will turn this over to them to go ahead and provide introductions and just let you know a little bit about what they see for this route.
Thank you so much. I'll let everyone introduce themselves at the table. My name is Beverly Fort. I'm the teacher recruiter for Christian County Public Schools.
Chris Benzel, superintendent.
Jessica Addison, Assistant Superintendent for Instruction.
And I'm Gretchen Wetzle, the Executive Director of WKDC.
Thank you so much for allowing us some time today to speak on House Bill 277, Option 9. As I said earlier, my name is Beverly Fort. I'm the teacher recruiter, and it's been an exciting time to be a part of a Grow Our Own program as we know the best resource for our students are our teachers. We are aware of the teacher shortage and that many districts have been and are facing, and we know that this is just not happening in Kentucky but across our nation. Back last fall, Kentucky legislators, Christian County Public Schools, Murray State, and the WKDC came together to do something very special in writing this bill. I want to thank those partners for their time in helping to think outside the box with the new option towards earning a bachelor's degree and initial teacher certification. It is so exciting to see this option in front of you all today. Creating a Grow Our Own Teacher Residency Program will allow a teacher pipeline in our own communities with paraprofessionals who work in our schools and want and desire to become teachers. These paraprofessionals, they just need to see a way, see a way, as many of them need to work full-time to provide for their family. We know that Option 9 is going to take a lot of planning, the right mindset, but we are ready to make this happen. This option will still allow for a rich and rigorous experience that will produce quality teachers just through a different route. These paraprofessionals would be working with master teachers to gain that valuable and extensive training, mentoring, and even having those opportunities to teach while working with the university along the way and with their coursework. It is a challenging term right now for our schools to fill vacancies and to recruit new people into this profession. Option 9 will be a game changer for districts like Christian County with interest in this Grow Our Own. Districts who have paraprofessionals would be ready to start working towards a teaching degree. We want a pipeline of teachers to recruit who live in our community, who know our kids and love our kids and have a passion for teaching. All of our students deserve the very best teachers, and I know some of those future teachers are people living in my hometown and in your hometown and working in our schools. They just need a different path towards becoming a teacher and possibly some help with some barriers along the way to reach this goal. Option 9 could afford this opportunity, which would make a difference for our kids, for our communities, and help address the teacher shortage. Thank you so much for allowing us to speak and be here today. We're ready to answer questions, but it's an exciting time for Christian County to see some of this coming to fruition.
Okay, thank you all. Are there any questions for me, for our guests, just with some of the background information on this route? We will get into the regulation next.
I don't have any questions, but I would like to thank them for their time.
Are there any other questions before we move on to the next item? All right, hearing none, we're going to move on to action items. These items are presented to the Board for action and will require a motion and a vote. Action item A is presented by Cassie Trueblood.
Thank you all. This does follow up on our presentation just now regarding the Option 9 route. Action item A is the proposed regulation for this route. Due to the quick turnaround between the Governor signing this bill into law and it becoming effective on Thursday, the typical standard, ordinary administrative regulation process would not allow this Board to promulgate a regulation in time for the new legislation to go into effect. Therefore, staff is proposing that the Board file an emergency regulation that will take effect immediately so that it will be in place when this route is in law, and that it be accompanied by an ordinary administrative regulation that is identical. And so once that regulation completes the process, it would take the place of the emergency regulation, which would fall away at that time. The staff note for this is on page 76, and the regulation is included in your materials starting on page 78. But it contains sections covering providers, the residency component, field experience, student teaching, application review, data reports, and professional certificates. A lot of the language that you see in this regulation mirrors language from other EPSB regulations. Though the full regulation is included in your materials, a few things that I wanted to highlight for your review. This does, under providers, it allows districts or groups of districts, which is your cooperatives, to partner with an EPSB-approved college or university. Because this route does result in a bachelor's degree, it has to be from an entity that can actually award a bachelor's degree. Additionally, kind of similar to what this Board has done with the proficiency route, it would be limited so that it can only be utilized for the college or university's already-approved EPSB routes to certification. The candidate will still be required to meet admissions requirements and must be employed with the district and enrolled in the program throughout. And again, that employment is going to be at the classified level. They will not have a certificate while completing this route. During the candidate's employment, the district will assist the candidate in meeting the field experience clock hours that are required for our traditional students, and that is going to occur during that first two years of employment. And then the third year of employment is where the candidate would be required to be placed in a setting that is consistent with the certification that they are seeking. So during that third year, they're going to have to meet the requirements similar to what our traditional students are meeting in student teaching. Again, that is included in your materials starting on page 78. Do you have any questions for me at this time? And I will note that because of the quick turnaround with this, we are asking that if you're wanting to approve the regulation today, that you would waive the second reading and approve the emergency and ordinary regulation. But Chair, I believe Mr. Stanfield may have had a question.
Did I hear you say that during the tenure of the route to the certification, that they are going to be considered classified within the district? And so does that mean classified pay, or is that a district? Is that depending upon the district?
So ultimately, pay will be handled at the district level. However, these individuals will only be eligible for classified employment. They will not have a certificate until they have completed the program, passed the praxis, and qualified for that initial certification. That has been a little bit of a point of confusion for people on this route because the other alternative routes do provide for certification while you are completing those, but those are also graduate-level programs. These are individuals that had already completed a bachelor's, whereas through this route, they're completing that initial bachelor's degree and then really having that field experience, student teaching built into the classified employment.
Okay, yeah, that cleared it up. That was, okay, I got you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions? All right, thank you, Ms. Trueblood. At this time, I will need a motion.
Okay, I will try and make this motion. So help me out, Cassie, if I mess it up. But I think I'm going to offer a motion to approve the emergency regulation for Option 9. Is that correct?
Yes, if you would make the motion to waive the second reading and approve the emergency and ordinary regulation for Option 9.
My motion is what she said.
Thank you, Mr. Stanfield. I will need a second at this time.
Sarah.
I second what she said, he said. Timothy Wooster.
Thank you, Dr. Wooster. The motion before the Board, and you might have to help me out as well, Cassie, is to approve 16 KAR 9110E expedited route to certification, the new emergency regulation, as well as waive the second reading of this proposal. I know there's something else I left off.
The emergency and ordinary.
And ordinary regulation there. All right, so is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Chesser, please call the roll.
Diane Berry.
Diane Berry, approve.
Amanda Ellis.
Amanda Ellis, approve.
Kathy Gunn.
Kathy Gunn, approve.
Jaclyn Mayfield.
Jaclyn Mayfield, approve.
Carmen Souter.
Carmen Souter, approve.
Wade Stanfield.
Wade Stanfield, approve.
Timothy Wooster.
Timothy Wooster, approve.
Vice Chair Weedman.
Sarah Weedman, approve.
Chair Mitchell.
Justin Mitchell, approve.
Voting is complete.
Thank you so much, and the motion passes. Next, we have Action Item B.
And Action Item B should be a familiar item for you. This is the second reading of the draft regulation for the Option 7 Alternative Route to Certification Institute. The EPSB had a first reading of this regulation at the April meeting. The staff note starts on page 94 with the regulation on page 96, and that full regulation is included for you. There was only one change that was made following the April meeting, and that change was actually made based upon the board's discussion at that time. Specifically, Section 2 of the proposed regulation was updated to provide that initial institute approval is for a period not to exceed two years, and then they can continue with the continuous approval cycle. All other provisions in the regulation did remain the same. Are there any questions on this regulation or the Option 7 route at this time?
All right, I don't hear any, so I will need a motion for Action Item B.
I'll offer a motion for approval of Action Item B.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stanfield. Do I have a second?
Jaclyn Mayfield, second.
Thank you, Ms. Mayfield. The motion before the board is to approve 16 KAR 9100 Alternative Route to Certification Institute's new administrative regulations dealing with the second reading of this regulation. Is there any discussion? Hearing None, Ms. Chester, please call the roll.
Diane Berry.
Diane Berry, approve.
Amanda Ellis.
Amanda Ellis, approve.
Kathy Gunn.
Kathy Gunn, approve.
Jaclyn Mayfield.
Jaclyn Mayfield, approve.
Carmen Souter.
Carmen Souter, approve.
Wade Stanfield.
Wade Stanfield, approve.
Timothy Wooster.
Timothy Wooster, approve.
Vice Chair Weedman.
Sarah Weedman, approve.
Chair Mitchell.
Justin Mitchell, approve.
Voting is complete.
Thank you, and the motion passes. Next, we have Action Item C presented by Sharon Salzman.
Yes, Action Item C is the Southeast-South Central CEO Plan 2 Proposal. And the CEO Plan 2 allows educators to pursue either a Rank 1 or Rank 2, depending on their current rank. The Southeast-South Central CEO Plan meets the EPSB-approved guidelines. It includes an introduction, capstone project, job-embedded professional development experiences, assessment of candidates, and program evaluation. And they do have to go through field-based experience, research, and approved professional development. The CEO Plan 2 proposal is included in the document library and requires approval by the EPSB before it may be offered for rank change.
Thank you. Are there any questions at this time? Hearing None, is there a motion?
Jaclyn Mayfield, I make the motion to approve Southeast-South Central CEO's Plan 2.
Thank you, Ms. Mayfield. Is there a second at this time?
Carmen Souter, I second.
So much. The motion before the board is to approve the Southeast-South Central Educational Cooperative Continuing Education Option Plan 2 Proposal. Is there any discussion? Hearing None, Ms. Chester, please call the roll.
Diane Berry.
Diane Berry, approve.
Amanda Ellis.
Amanda Ellis, approve.
Kathy Gunn.
Kathy Gunn, approve.
Jaclyn Mayfield.
Jaclyn Mayfield, approve.
Carmen Souter.
Carmen Souter, approve.
Wade Stanfield.
Wade Stanfield, approve.
Timothy Wooster.
Timothy Wooster, approve.
Vice Chair Weedman.
Sarah Weedman, approve.
Chair Mitchell.
Justin Mitchell, approve.
Voting is complete.
Thank you so much, and the motion passes. At this time, we have Action Item D.
Yes, this is to allow the 10-year recency for admission assessments. Currently, it's a five-year recency. And according to the Educational Testing Service, ETS, who administers the, what we call case or core, maintained that those scores are valid for 10 years. We checked with Pearson, who administers the ACT, and they indicated that the ACT scores do not expire. We have had multiple continued requests from educator-preparation providers to waive the admission test recency, and staff recommends that the EPSB allow passing scores on the admissions assessments to be valid for 10 years.
Thank you. Is there any questions at this time? All right, well, if that's the case, then is there a motion?
Kathy Gunn, I make a motion that we approve Action Item D and allow for the 10-year recency for admissions.
Thank you, Ms. Gunn. Is there a second?
Mr. Stanfield.
Second.
All right, I think I heard Mr. Stanfield first, so he will be the one that has the second. The motion before the board is to approve 16 KAR 5020 Request to Allow the 10-Year Recency for Admissions Assessment. Is there any discussion? Hearing None, Ms. Chester, please call the roll.
Diane Berry.
Diane Berry, approve.
Amanda Ellis.
Amanda Ellis, approve.
Kathy Gunn.
Kathy Gunn, approve.
Jaclyn Mayfield.
Jaclyn Mayfield, approve.
Carmen Souter.
Carmen Souter, approve.
Wade Stanfield.
Wade Stanfield, approve.
Timothy Wooster.
Timothy Wooster, approve.
Vice Chair Weedman.
Sarah Weedman, approve.
And Chair Mitchell.
Justin Mitchell, approve.
Voting is complete.
And the motion passes. Next up, we have Action Item E, which is presented by Byron Darnell.
Yes, Sue, this 16 KAR 5040 involves the allowing experience as a student teacher to apply to their student teaching requirements. This is a request for the 2022-2023 school year. This is going back to the first support of this by the board in spring of '20 and last year as well. And certainly, this just allows districts to have greater flexibility in a time of need. Certainly, that was forced, a forced hand during the height of COVID, but as we also know, that we continue to have shortages in many areas, substitutes being one of those that is causing concern along with many others. So this would be in support of and a continuation of allowing student teachers to acquire an emergency substitute certificate, and then while they are serving as the substitute within their respective buildings, it would also count and support them as they meet their requirements for student teaching.
Thank you. Are there any questions at this time? All right, Hearing None, I will need a motion on this action item.
Carmen Souter, I make a motion to approve Action Item E.
Ms. Souter, do I have a second?
Jaclyn Mayfield, I second.
Thank you, Ms. Mayfield. The motion before the board is to approve 16 KAR 5040 Request to Allow Substitute Teaching Experience to Qualify as Student Teaching Experience for the 2022-2023 school year. Is there any discussion? Hearing None, Ms. Chester, please call the roll.
Diane Berry.
Diane Berry, approve.
Amanda Ellis.
Amanda Ellis, approve.
Kathy Gunn.
Kathy Gunn, approve.
Jaclyn Mayfield.
Jaclyn Mayfield, I approve.
Carmen Souter.
Carmen Souter, approve.
Wade Stanfield.
Wade Stanfield, approve.
Timothy Wooster.
Wooster, approve.
Vice Chair Weedman.
Sarah Weedman, approve.
Chair Mitchell.
Justin Mitchell, approve.
Voting is complete.
Thank you, Ms. Chester, and the motion passes. Last, we have Action Item F presented by Todd Davis.
Good morning, everyone. Action Item F applies to remote observations of student teachers, which is also in regards to 16 KAR 5040, but it's Section 4, Subsection 1, which allows remote observations, however, has additional language that requires institutions to submit for approval prior to conducting those remote observations. We know over the last two years, with restrictions and intermittent school closures due to COVID-19, it's caused many challenges in conducting these in-person observations. And as you also may recall, each year, the EPSB has provided some flexibility in a waiver, waiving that portion of the regulation that they submit for prior approval. Continued approval of remote observations will continue to provide additional flexibility for meeting the number of required observations while also protecting the safety in students and teachers in each of the schools. Therefore, staff is recommending that the EPSB approve remote student teaching observations for all educator preparation programs for the 2022-2023 school year.
Thank you. Is there, are there any questions?
I just have one quick question on that. Todd, is that for the student or the university person observing? Can you just clarify that piece? I didn't think about that earlier.
It is for the university supervisor observations of the student teacher.
Awesome. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Are there any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Davis. Is there a motion at this time?
Jaclyn Mayfield, I make the motion to approve 16 KAR 5040 The Request to Approve Remote Student Teaching Observation for All Educator Preparation Programs for the 2022-23 Year.
And thank you, Mr. Stanfield, for the second. The motion before the board is to approve 16 KAR 5040 Request to Approve Remote Student Teaching Observations for All Educator Preparation Programs for the 2022-2023 school year. Is there any discussion? Hearing None, Ms. Chester, please call the roll.
Diane Berry.
Diane Berry, approve.
Amanda Ellis.
Amanda Ellis, approve.
Kathy Gunn.
Kathy Gunn, approve.
Jaclyn Mayfield.
Jaclyn Mayfield, approve.
Carmen Souter.
Carmen Souter, approve.
Wade Stanfield.
Wade Stanfield, approve.
Timothy Wooster.
Wooster, approve.
Vice Chair Weedman.
Sarah Weedman, not approve. The word is escaping me.
Chair Mitchell.
Justin Mitchell, approve.
Voting is complete.
Thank you, Ms. Chester, and the motion passes. The board is now ready to review waiver request KRS 1610281N, provides that the board have the authority to waive its administrative regulations when a request is submitted by an applicant for certification, a post-secondary institution, or a superintendent of a local school district. When requesting a waiver, the requesting party must submit to the board a written request along with appropriate justification for the waiver. EPSB staff reviewed the waivers with the EPSB's waiver committee during an open meeting on June 20th, and the waiver committee formulated recommendations. Brandon Herrod, Sharon Salzman, and Crystal Hoard will present the waiver request to the full board, and waiver committee member Kathy Gunn will present the committee's recommendation for final action, starting with waiver A presented by Brandon Herrod.
Thank you, Chair Mitchell, and good morning, everyone. We'll start with waiver A, which is a request to waive student teaching days due to district school closures for Transylvania University. 16 KAR 5040, Section 5, states that each educator-preparation institution shall provide a full professional semester to include a period of student teaching for a minimum of 70 full days. District closures and isolation.
Brandon, if you're there, I think you froze on us.
I think Mr. Herrod is having some technical difficulties at the moment, so until he's able to join us, I'll just jump in on this one. Waiver A is included in your material starting on page 109, and this was a request to waive student teaching days that came from Transylvania University. They have listed in there their teachers and the number of days that they were requesting a waiver of, and then this was just due to district closures, things that were beyond the realm of what was within their abilities to take care of, and that the waiver committee did review this on June 20th, and I believe Ms. Gunn has the waiver committee's recommendation.
Yes, the waiver committee reviewed the waiver request and supporting documents submitted by Transylvania University. The committee found exceptional circumstances justifying the waiver. Therefore, the committee recommends that EPSB grant the waiver.
Thank you, Ms. Gunn. And at this time, I will need, this item is on the agenda for action, and I will need a motion. Is there a motion?
I would offer a motion to approve the waiver committee's recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Stanfield. Do you have a second?
Second, this is Amanda Ellis.
Thank you, Dr. Ellis. The motion before the board is to approve or to grant 16 KAR 5040 Request to Waive Student Teacher Days Due to District School Closures for Transylvania University. Is there any discussion? Hearing None, Ms. Chester, please call the roll.
Diane Berry.
Diane Berry, approve.
Amanda Ellis.
Amanda Ellis, approve.
Kathy Gunn.
Kathy Gunn, approve.
Jaclyn Mayfield.
Jaclyn Mayfield, approve.
Carmen Souter.
Carmen Souter, approve.
Wade Stanfield.
Wade Stanfield, approve.
Timothy Wooster.
Timothy Wooster, approve.
Vice Chair Weedman.
Sarah Weedman, approve.
Chair Mitchell.
Justin Mitchell, approve.
Voting is complete.
Thank you, and the motion passes. Next, we have waiver B.
Hello, everyone. I'll try again here. Sorry, the Wi-Fi dropped on me there. Thank you, Chair Mitchell, and thank you, Cassie, for stepping in. This one is an alternate student teaching placement request for Christina Redmond submitted by Eastern Kentucky University. 16 KAR 5040 requires that a candidate pursuing a primary through Grade 12 certificate shall have their student teaching balance between an elementary school placement and a middle high school placement. EKU is requesting a waiver of the requirement for Christina Redmond to complete student teaching in both a primary and intermediate placement. Ms. Redmond is enrolled in EKU's undergraduate elementary education initial certification program. Student teaching placements are done in collaboration between EKU's office personnel and local districts. A spreadsheet was submitted to the district personnel listing the placement requirements for each student teacher candidate. EKU's district contact placed Ms. Redmond with two teachers at Daniel Boone Elementary on Monday, April- On Monday, April 11th, 2022, the clinical educator supervisor assigned to Ms. Redmond contacted EKU with concerns because Ms. Redmond was assigned to a first-grade teacher and third-grade teacher and did not have the intermediate placement. In an effort to prevent this in the future, EKU has developed procedures for their office that requires the clinical educator, teacher candidates, and their students to check and ensure placements meet the regulatory requirements. Since Ms. Redmond was assigned incorrectly due to no fault of her own, EKU is requesting that the EPSB approve the first and third grade placements. Ms. Redmond was scheduled to graduate at the end of the spring semester. Due to this urgency of this matter, the EPSB procedures for conditional waiver were followed. The request was reviewed and approved by the EPS, I'm sorry, EPSB chair and a waiver committee member, and the conditional waiver was issued for Ms. Redmond. The request is now before the full EPSB for final action.
Thank you. And Ms. Gunn, what was the waiver committee's recommendation?
The waiver committee recommended that we approve the waiver.
All right, thank you so much. And do we, do I have a motion at this time?
Timothy Wooster, I make a motion that we approve the waiver.
Thank you, Dr. Wooster. Is there a second?
Chair Weedman, I second.
You, Ms. Weedman. The motion before the board is to approve 16KAR 5040, alternative student teaching placement request for Christina Redmond. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Chester, please call the roll.
Diane Berry.
Diane Berry, approve.
Amanda Ellis.
Amanda Ellis, approve.
Kathy Gunn.
Kathy Gunn, approve.
Jaclyn Mayfield.
Jaclyn Mayfield, approve.
Carmen Souter.
Carmen Souter, approve.
Wade Stanfield.
Wade Stanfield, approve.
Timothy Wooster.
Timothy Wooster, approve.
Vice Chair Weedman.
Sarah Weedman, approve.
Chair Mitchell.
Justin Mitchell, approve.
Voting is complete.
Thank you, Ms. Chester, and the motion passes. Moving now to waiver C.
Waiver C is an alternative student teaching placement request for Lauren Wildner, submitted on behalf of Morehead State University. Morehead State University is requesting a waiver to place their theater education student, Lauren Wildner, at the high school level for both of the required student teaching placements in the fall 2022 semester. The county in which Ms. Wildner is completing her student teaching does not have a qualified elementary. For this reason, having exhausted all possibilities in the district, Morehead State University is requesting a waiver for Ms. Wildner to complete her 70-day student teaching assignment at the high school setting.
Thank you. And Ms. Gunn, what was the waiver committee's recommendation?
We recommended that you grant the waiver.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Gunn. At this time, I will need a motion.
Jaclyn Mayfield.
All right.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm sorry. Jaclyn Mayfield, I make the motion to approve the waiver.
Thank you, Ms. Mayfield. Is there a second?
Carmen Souter, I second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Souter. The motion before the board is to accept 16KAR 5040, alternative student teaching placement request for Lauren Wildner. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Chester, please call the roll.
Diane Berry.
Diane Berry, approve.
Amanda Ellis.
Amanda Ellis, approve.
Kathy Gunn.
Kathy Gunn, approve.
Jaclyn Mayfield.
Jaclyn Mayfield, approve.
Carmen Souter.
Carmen Souter, approve.
Wade Stanfield.
Wade Stanfield, approve.
Timothy Wooster.
Timothy Wooster, approve.
Vice Chair Weedman.
Sarah Weedman, approve.
Chair Mitchell.
Justin Mitchell, approve.
Voting is complete.
Thank you, Ms. Chester, and the motion passes. Next, we have waiver D.
Waiver D is very similar. It's an alternative student teaching placement request for Nicholas Wolford submitted by Morehead State University. Morehead State University is requesting a waiver to place music education student Nicholas Wolford at both the middle school and high school level for his required student teaching placements in the fall 2022 semester. The county in which Mr. Wolford is completing his student teaching does not have a qualified elementary music teacher as a placement option. For this reason, having exhausted all possibilities in the district, Morehead State University is requesting a waiver for Mr. Wolford to complete his 70-day student teaching assignment in both the middle school and high school setting for the fall 2022 semester.
Thank you. And Ms. Gunn, what was the waiver committee's recommendation?
The waiver committee recommended that we approve.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Gunn. At this time, I'll need a motion.
Diane Berry, motion.
Thank you, Ms. Berry. Is there a second?
Carmen Souter, I second.
Ms. Souter, the motion before the board is to accept and approve 16KAR 5040, alternative student teaching placement request for Nicholas Wolford. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Chester, please call the roll.
Diane Berry.
Diane Berry, approve.
Amanda Ellis.
Amanda Ellis, approve.
Kathy Gunn.
Kathy Gunn, approve.
Jaclyn Mayfield.
Jaclyn Mayfield, approve.
Carmen Souter.
Carmen Souter, approve.
Wade Stanfield.
Wade Stanfield, approve.
Timothy Wooster.
Timothy Wooster, approve.
Vice Chair Weedman.
Sarah Weedman, approve.
Chair Mitchell.
Justin Mitchell, approve.
Voting is complete.
Thank you, and the motion passes. Next, we have waiver E presented by Sharon Salzman.
Yes, Georgetown College has submitted a waiver request on a candidate for admission to the Option 6 Masters of Arts in Education for moderate to severe disabilities. The candidate has a 2.90 GPA on her last 30 hours of coursework. She did take an additional three-hour class to try to increase her GPA. She did earn an A on that additional class. However, the oldest of those hours was an A, and by regulation, the new A, the old A, was replaced by the most recent A, so it didn't change her GPA at all. But Georgetown College is requesting a waiver of the GPA requirement to admit the candidate to the program.
Thank you. And Ms. Gunn, what was the waiver committee's recommendation?
The waiver committee recommended we approve the waiver.
Thank you, Ms. Gunn. At this time, I'll need a motion on waiver E.
Jaclyn Mayfield, I make the motion to approve waiver E.
Thank you, Ms. Mayfield, and is there a second?
Wade Stanfield, second.
Thank you, Mr. Stanfield. The motion before the board is to accept and to approve 16KAR 5020, request to waive required GPA for admissions to Masters of Arts in Education program for moderate and severe disabilities. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Chester, please call the roll.
Diane Berry.
Diane Berry, approve.
Amanda Ellis.
Amanda Ellis, approve.
Kathy Gunn.
Kathy Gunn, approve.
Jaclyn Mayfield.
Jaclyn Mayfield, approve.
Carmen Souter.
Carmen Souter, approve.
Wade Stanfield.
Stanfield, approve.
Timothy Wooster.
Timothy Wooster, approve.
Vice Chair Weedman.
Sarah Weedman, approve.
Chair Mitchell.
Justin Mitchell, approve.
Voting is complete.
Thank you, Ms. Chester, and the motion passes. Next, we have waiver F.
Yes, University of Kentucky has submitted a waiver request on behalf of three of their music education students. They took the music instrumental and general knowledge instead of the music content and instruction, and there was a reason for that. ETS, when we adopted the new instrumental and vocal music, ETS assumed we were getting rid of the music content and instruction, and therefore, they removed that from their website and would not allow students to enroll in that class. Since then, I mean, in that test, since then, we have got that fixed with ETS, and UK has also made their students aware of the change. And so anyone going for instrumental only would take the instrumental test. Anyone going for vocal only would go take the vocal test. Anyone going for instrumental and vocal combined certification would take the music content and instruction. We talked with ETS. There's really, anyone taking that test would still qualify to teach music, the instrumental and vocal, so there's not much difference. But they have got that fixed now, and it would allow them to enroll into that assessment.
Thank you. And Ms. Gunn, what was the waiver committee's recommendation?
The waiver committee recommends that EPSB grant the waiver.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Gunn. Do I have a motion on waiver F?
Motion, Diane Berry.
Thank you, Ms. Berry, and is there a second?
Jaclyn Mayfield, second.
Thank you, Ms. Mayfield. The motion before the board is to grant and to approve 16KAR 6010, request to accept the instrumental music test for three University of Kentucky music education students. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Chester, please call the roll.
Diane Berry.
Diane Berry, approve.
Amanda Ellis.
Amanda Ellis, approve.
Kathy Gunn.
Kathy Gunn, approve.
Jaclyn Mayfield.
Jaclyn Mayfield, approve.
Carmen Souter.
Carmen Souter, approve.
Wade Stanfield.
Wade Stanfield, approve.
Timothy Wooster.
Timothy Wooster, approve.
Vice Chair Weedman.
Sarah Weedman, approve.
Chair Mitchell.
Justin Mitchell, approve.
Voting is complete.
Thank you, and the motion passes. Last, we have waiver G presented by Crystal Hoard.
Sorry, I'm trying to get everything. Can you all hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Waiver G is requested by Ms. Julia Jadak. Since her last renewal in 2017, Ms. Jadak has completed two and a half years of teaching experience. She, two years of that was full-time teaching, half of that, or half of one year was based on substitute teaching experience. Due to the pandemic and the closure of schools and the need for substitutes not being what it had been in the past, she did not earn another half-year of substitute teaching experience during the 2021 school year, which would have allowed her to meet the three-years requirement. For the past two years, the board had approved a blanket waiver to allow two and a half years of experience to renew due to the pandemic. However, that was not one of the waivers that had been widely requested this year statewide. So therefore, on an individual basis, this teacher is requesting that her two years of, two and a half years of experience will be accounted in lieu of the three years.
Thank you. And Ms. Gunn, what was the waiver committee's recommendation?
The waiver committee found exceptional circumstances justifying the waiver. Therefore, the committee recommends that EPSB grant the waiver.
Thank you, Ms. Gunn. At this time, I will need a motion on waiver G.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stanfield. Is there a second?
Jaclyn Mayfield, second.
Thank you, Ms. Mayfield. The motion before the board is to approve and accept 16KAR 4060, request to accept two and a half years of qualified teaching experience to meet the requirements for certification renewal for Julia Jadak. Are there any questions or any discussion? I'm sorry. Hearing none, Ms. Chester, please call the roll.
Diane Berry.
Diane Berry, approve.
Amanda Ellis.
Amanda Ellis, approve.
Kathy Gunn.
Kathy Gunn, approve.
Jaclyn Mayfield.
Jaclyn Mayfield, approve.
Carmen Souter.
Carmen Souter, approve.
Wade Stanfield.
Stanfield, approve.
Timothy Wooster.
Timothy Wooster, approve.
Vice Chair Weedman.
Sarah Weedman, approve.
Chair Mitchell.
Justin Mitchell, approve.
Voting is complete.
Thank you, and the motion passes. We're now moving to alternative route to certification applications. We have three alternative routes to certification applications today. These applicants are pursuing the Option 1 Exceptional Work Experience Route to Certification. This is one of the alternative routes established by the legislature in KRS 161048. An applicant with exceptional work experience must have an offer of employment from a local school district, a bachelor's or graduate degree meeting minimum GPA requirements, and an academic major or a passing score on an academic content assessment in the area in which certification is being sought. The board will need to determine if the applicant's work experience constitutes exceptional work experience. The applications will be presented to Hoard.
Thank you, Chair Mitchell. The first applicant is requested by, or the first application for exceptional work experience is requested by Boyle County Schools on behalf of Ms. Laura Katie Palmer. Ms. Palmer actually is already a certified teacher. However, there are no alternative routes or traditional routes at this time that lead to the dance certification, which is being requested on her behalf. We do have precedent where there have been a couple other circumstances where teachers have been certified through this pathway in the area of dance due to the fact that there are no approved programs leading to the K-12 Dance Certification in the state of Kentucky any longer. So Ms. Palmer, she has over 10 years of experience in the field of dance, both as an instructor, choreographer, and as a dancing in different level groups throughout her career. She currently is, serves as the choreographer for Center College's football and basketball dance teams, but she's also an elementary teacher in the classroom with Boyle County Schools and has been asked to take over their dance and theater program. Any questions that you all may happen to have, I'm happy to address, and just let me know. Thank you so much.
Are there any questions at this time? All right, well, I will need a motion for Laura Palmer.
Timothy Wooster, so moved.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wooster. Is there a second?
Second, Amanda Ellis.
The motion before the board is to grant Laura Palmer alternative route to certification in dance on grades. Is there any discussion?
So you can't submerge them in water for short periods of time. So as far as the fit, once you get the earbuds properly seated, they do stay in place really well. Now, if you do some extreme movements, they might work them.
All right. That is noted. And I'm going to move on to Ms. Chester. Please call the roll.
Diane Berry.
Diane Berry, approve.
Amanda Ellis.
Amanda Ellis, approve.
Kathy Gunn.
Kathy Gunn, approve.
Jaclyn Mayfield.
Jaclyn Mayfield, approve.
Carmen Souter.
Carmen Souter, approve.
Wade Stanfield.
Wade Stanfield, approve.
Timothy Wooster.
Timothy Wooster, approve.
Vice Chair Weedman.
Sarah Weedman, approve.
Chair Mitchell.
Justin Mitchell, approve.
Voting is complete.
Thank you, and the motion passes. Next, we have Application B.
And thank you again. Application B is requested on behalf of the Covington Diocese for Ms. Merrily Routine. She has, she is a native speaker of Spanish. She has over nine years of work experience in the field. She has served as a concierge service associate with Cincinnati Children's Hospital, serving as an interpreter for Hispanic families and any families that are there at the hospital as far as hospital tours, also providing interpreting experience with the doctors and the MyChart program. She's also. Um, she's also served as a volunteer with the Spanish Care Team, um, in TriHealth Bethesda. She's also been working as a school, um, uh, K, pre-K director and teacher in the, um, Diocese of Covington for the past three years. Um, the district is looking for, uh, the world, the, the school system is looking for, uh, her to become certified in the area of K through 12 Spanish. And all items were, um, completed and, um, and met the requirements of the statute, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions at this time? All right, hearing none, do I have a motion?
Timothy Wooster, motion.
Thank you, Dr. Wooster, uh, is there a second?
Jacqueline Mayfield, second.
Yeah, I think I'll be build first, and so she will be on the second. The motion before the board is to approve the alternative routes, uh, for certification application for Maryland routing, uh, in Spanish in all grades. Are there any discussion? Or is there? Hearing none, Ms. Chester, please call the roll.
Diane Berry.
Diane Berry approve.
Amanda Ellis.
Amanda Ellis approve.
Kathy Gunn.
Kathy Gunn approve.
Jacqueline Mayfield.
Jacqueline Mayfield approve.
Carmen Souter.
Carmen Souter approve.
Wade Stanfield.
Wade Stanfield approve.
Timothy Wooster.
Timothy Wooster approve.
Vice Chair Weedman.
Sarah Weedman approve.
Chair Mitchell.
Justin Mitchell approve.
Voting is complete.
Thank you so much, and the motion passes. Last, we have application C.
Thank you. Application C is requested by Jefferson County Public Schools on behalf of Ms. Carla Wilder. She has over five years of work experience in the field of Spanish. Um, she is also very fluent in, uh, in Spanish. Um, she holds a master's degree and a bachelor's degree in Spanish along with a graduate certificate in Latin American and Latino Studies. Um, in her role with Jefferson County up to this point, she has served as a classified, classified employee and substitute teacher. Um, she is responsible in her school for translating and communicating, um, uh, with Spanish-speaking families. Um, she's also been asked to translate information regarding vaccination statuses, school performance, disciplinary problems, um, just anything where there's a, you know, a language barrier. Um, she also works in her, in her role as family support worker, um, to, um, provide any assistance to the school, um, on behalf of the teacher or administration. Um, all, but all the requirements of her portfolio met requ- uh, or met the requirements of the statute, and, um, the district is seeking certification in the areas of Spanish all grades.
Thank you, Ms. Hoard, um, at this time, I will need a motion. Was that, Mr. Stanfield?
Wade Stanfield, motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stanfield, is there a second?
Diane Berry, second.
Thank you, Ms. Berry. Uh, the motion before the board is to approve Carol Wilder's alternative route to certification application in Spanish all grades. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Chester, please call the roll.
Diane Berry.
Diane Berry approve.
Amanda Ellis.
Amanda Ellis approve.
Kathy Gunn.
Kathy Gunn approve.
Jacqueline Mayfield.
Jacqueline Mayfield approve.
Carmen Souter.
Carmen Souter approve.
Wade Stanfield.
Wade Stanfield approve.
Timothy Wooster.
Timothy Wooster approve.
Vice Chair Weedman.
Sarah Weedman approve.
Chair Mitchell.
Justin Mitchell approve.
Voting is complete.
Thank you, Ms. Chester, and the motion passes. I will now open the floor to any board member for board comments. Does anyone wish to share? Well, I will just say, uh, uh, on behalf of myself, I, I would just thank everybody for making time out of their summer to, um, make, uh, chuck out of your day to spend for EPSB and, and working through that. I know that's difficult in the summertime, um, when people are still working, uh, in, in the schools, but then also trying to take a, a moment of break, uh, to, um, get back into the swing of things this, this coming school year. So thank you all for, for all of the time that you've dedicated to EPSB. Is there anybody at this ti- anybody else at this time? All right, at this time, I believe we are ready to go into closed session pursuant to KRS 618101C and J to conduct a character and fitness review and to review potential actions relating to complaints and reports. The board will also review pending litigation. I will need a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Chair.
Well, I make the motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Thank you. Um, the motion now before the board is to, a motion to go into closed session. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Chester, please call the roll.
Diane Berry.
Diane Berry approve.
Amanda Ellis.
Amanda Ellis approve.
Kathy Gunn.
Kathy Gunn approve.
Jacqueline Mayfield.
Jacqueline Mayfield approve.
Carmen Souter.
Carmen Souter approve.
Wade Stanfield.
Wade Stanfield approve.
Timothy Wooster.
Timothy Wooster approve.
Vice Chair Weedman.
Sarah Weedman approve.
Chair Mitchell.
Justin Mitchell approve.
Voting is complete.
Thank you, and the motion passes. So at this time, we're ready to move into closed session. We'll take a moment for the recording to stop. At this time, I will need a motion to go into open session. Do I have a motion?
Jacqueline Mayfield, I make the motion to go back into open session.
Thank you, Ms. Mayfield, and do I have a second?
Kathy Gunn, I second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Gunn. The motion before the board is to go back into open session. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. All right, motion passes. We are now back in open session. At this time, we will vote on the items discussed during closed session. I will read our decision, and we will vote. Fitness, one through four approve, five defer, six approve conditionally, seven deny, eight approve conditionally, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve approve, thirteen deny, fourteen approve, fifteen defer, sixteen approve conditionally, seventeen through twenty-one approve. For CA four online character and fitness, one approve, two defer, three through five approve, six deny, seven approve. For agreed orders, one through thirty, accepts findings of fact, conclusions of law, recommended order, and appeal rights. Uh, case number one, we accept the findings of fact, modify the conclusions of law, and recommend, recommended order to adopt the petitioner's exceptions and update the training due date to September 1st, 2022. And for educator cases, case eighty-two defer, case eighty-three and eighty-four refer to hearing, eighty-five defer, eighty-six, eighty-seven, and eighty-eight refer to hearing, eighty-nine and ninety, no further action, ninety-one through ninety-three dismissed with prejudice, ninety-four through one hundred attorney review, and one oh one through one eighteen dismissed with prejudice. At this time, uh, we will call the roll for the members to vote.
Diane Berry.
Diane Berry approve.
Amanda Ellis.
Amanda Ellis approve.
Kathy Gunn.
Kathy Gunn approve all.
Jacqueline Mayfield.
Jacqueline Mayfield approve all.
Wade Stanfield.
Wade Stanfield approve all except I will recuse myself on case one 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 nine two three.
Timothy Wooster.
Timothy Wooster approve all.
Vice Chair Weedman.
Sarah Weedman approve all.
Chair Mitchell.
Justin Mitchell approve on all.
Voting is complete.
Thank you so much. Um, just a reminder to the board that our next meeting will be August fifteenth, 2022, so hopefully, you've got that on the calendar and set some time apart for that meeting on that day. So I hope to see you all there. And at this time, I will need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Stanfield, do I have a second?
Second.
I heard Mr. Wooster, thank you. Uh, the motion for the board is a motion to adjourn. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Sharp, please call the roll.
Diane Berry.
Diane Berry approve.
Amanda Ellis.
Amanda Ellis approve.
Kathy Gunn.
Kathy Gunn approve.
Jacqueline Mayfield.
Jacqueline Mayfield approve.
Wade Stanfield.
Wade Stanfield approve.
Timothy Wooster.
Timothy Wooster approve.
Vice Chair Weedman.
Sarah Weedman approve.
Chair Mitchell.
Justin Mitchell approve.
Voting is complete.
Ms. Sharp, and we are now adjourned.